Okay, we're gonna call the regular city council meeting to order Monday, October 10th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
David Paradise.
Nicole Andrioff.
Kirby Moyno.
Avery.
Sam Solars.
Jessica Bonnewell.
Jared Bogie.
Dan Reamer.
Michael Sommerfeld.
Invocation?
Let us pray. Oh Lord, please instruct us and teach us in the way that we should conduct this meeting. Please counsel us with your loving eye on us. Let our aims in this meeting be aligned with your direction. Let our plans be orchestrated by you, Father. Let your will be done in this meeting so that this can be a meeting as based on your desires for us. Whatever it is that you want to result from this meeting, Lord, let it happen. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rule of the agenda? I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Vote yes, motion passes 4-0. Rule of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Solars. Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Yes, motion passes 4-0. Wright County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Since the last council meeting on September 12th, we've had, Wright County's had 170 calls for service in Montrose. Twenty-seven of those were traffic stops, which resulted in three citations. All those calls of service, 96 were case reports. We had four in custody arrests, second-degree assault with a dangerous weapon, DUI, possession of stolen property, which was a motor vehicle, fifth-degree drugs. We also had a court order violation that didn't result in a custody, but it's waiting a charging decision by the county attorney. Current issues that I've seen, we've had issues with counterfeit bills from some of our businesses in town. It's typically like a $20 or a $50 bill. Some say motion prop money on the front. Some have like a foreign language printed on the front in red lettering. For the most part, they look like a real bill, other than that printed item on it. So we've been trying to educate some of the businesses in town. I think we've had three in Montrose and one in Waverly. And sometimes they don't go report it either, so I encourage any businesses to report them if they come across them. We're investigating it right now. I'm waiting for some video footage to come through, and hopefully we can figure out who's doing it. We had a stop-arm violation on First Street North. I just encourage the public to be mindful around school buses. We're dealing with little kids, and we really don't want any injuries. It's a misdemeanor crime to drive past a school bus arm. It's a gross misdemeanor if the children are outside of the bus, so we're talking about some serious charges. We also had a theft at one of the storage units at night, and we're currently investigating that. Is there any questions?
No. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. School board candidates, I had a couple of the school board candidates for the Buffalo Hanover-Montrose School District that reached out and were interested in speaking, so if you two would like to come up and talk, one at a time or both, it don't matter. Just state your name for the record, please.
My name's Tim Zabracky. Good evening, Mayor Moynog, Montrose City Council. I'm Tim Zabracky, and I'm a candidate for the Buffalo Hanover-Montrose School Board. I'm a father of two, including a newborn daughter, husband, and veteran. I served in the Air Force as an intelligence officer for six years, to include two tours in Iraq and Afghanistan. I led diverse groups of people and have seen the best and worst the world has to offer. In my time overseas, I learned about the true meaning of service. I'm running for school board because I have the passion for service and want to ensure our kids are getting the best education possible. I'm a concerned parent, taxpayer, and resident in the district. We've seen over the past several years trends that are going in a direction they shouldn't be going. For instance, there's a decline in proficiency rating in math, reading, and science across the state of Minnesota. The graduation rate in Buffalo has also declined from 2018 at 93.5% to 94.4% in 2021. The district also lost 310 students from the 2020-2021 school year to the 2122 school year. But on the flip side, per pupil spending has gone up each year. If per pupil spending is going up, why are we seeing the trends going in the opposite direction, proficiency ratings and graduation rates? What could be the biggest cause of these drops? COVID, as we all know, has had a lot to do with it. As a parent-endorsed candidate, I believe we need to find ways to get more parents involved in our children's education. We also need to look at any regulations and rules that don't allow the teachers to focus on teaching and the students to focus on learning. One of the things I did when overseas was to keep things simple, in other words, the KISS method. Keep it simple, stupid, as the acronym goes. If we can simplify our policies, we can switch the focus to improving the quality of our With that said, I kept things simple while I was overseas, as I had mentioned, and I was able to increase production 300 to 400%. We were mission-focused, we fostered relationships, and I can get that job done while on the school board. I look forward to meeting each of you. If you do have any questions for me, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tim.
I don't know how to follow that. I'm Angie Gregg, and I am the founder of Moms for Liberty in Wright County. And with some of my investigative stuff, I've had doors slammed in my face, I've had emails not returned, I've had phone calls not returned from our school district as a concerned parent. We did a data request on some of the training, and it was very eye-opening. And after having discussions with the superintendent and the curriculum director, I just feel like we need more parents representing parents in our district. So that's my focus. I mean, the schools itself, my daughter has had a great run there, she loves it there, she loves all the teachers, so I'm not out to get anybody. But I do want less politics in the school, I want more parents in the school, I want more transparency, and I want a list of recommended reading and required reading books for all students and every level, because I think that's where... That's just really important, more important than you can know. If you've known anything about what's going on in St. Michael's School District, there's some books there that are very questionable, the parents, 100 parents showed up at a school board meeting, and they still forced that book, forced kids to read that book. So they're just not listening to us, so we just need more parents involved. I would like to help parents be involved, feel like they can be involved, empower them to ask questions, empower them to take their children's education back. So that's what I stand for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Angie. Request for council action, Ms. Angie and Mr. Sean Cuff.
Hello, my name is Angie Cuff. My husband's name is Sean. We live at 821 Cole Avenue. I turned in a letter for the request for council action, so I'm assuming people have received that letter. But we recently had our water turned off, and we contacted the city. We were told that our second meter was not working. They came out to fix it, and we received a water bill from the city for over $3,000. We were told that the city's water meter was broken and that we weren't being charged for our second meter. We've always paid the amount due on the water bill on time through auto pay every month for the last over nine years. We've never examined the gallons used or assumed that there was a discrepancy. We've recently been notified that 407,595 gallons of water were used over that time. However, we've received not one itemized bill of where that number came from, so I do question the accuracy of that number that came from a broken, a broken meter. There's three tiers of water usage for the city of Montrose. Tier one is from 0 to 5,999 gallons, and the price of that tier is $5.75 per 1,000 gallons used. Tier two is if you use 6,000 to 11,999 gallons, you're charged $6.33 per 1,000 gallons used. And tier three is if, and if any one billing month you use over 12,000 gallons of water, you're charged $6.96 per 1,000 gallons used. For whatever reason, however, the system works with the city, we are being charged at tier three for every month for all nine years on our second meter, which means we've used 12,000 gallons of water every month, which is just completely inaccurate. The pricing of that versus tier one, which we would have been at, or possibly tier two, I guess, there's no way of knowing because there's no itemized bill that came out, but it's a difference of the $2,836 at tier three versus if that same amount was at tier one, it'd be $2,343, which is about $500 less than what we're being asked to pay. In addition to that, we're being charged 2022 water prices for water that we used in 2013, 2014, 2015, et cetera, which is just simply not accurate. I think we all know prices of everything have gone up over that time, and certainly the water prices have gone up as well. Again, the 2022 costs at tier one are $5.75, tier two, $6.33, and tier three, $6.96 for this year, 2022. I did as much research as I could, but the only year I could find online for the city of Montrose was 2017. And in 2017, the prices were $5.10 at tier one, $5.61 at tier two, and $6.17 at tier three, which is 12% less than what it is today. Just that alone, the bill should be $758 less, just on that year. If we look back at 2013, which I don't have that number, so this is an estimate, but if we go back an additional four years, based on another 12% increase in the price, excuse me, 12% decrease going back to 2013, the estimated water would be $4.50 per 1,000 gallons used. And based on that number, our bill would be $1,002 less than what we're being charged at the 2022 rates for every year. So just based on the tier levels alone, being charged at tier three level, which I'm pretty safe to assume we don't have a pool or anything, on our outside water meters, I'm pretty certain I can say we've never used 12,000 gallons in one month. Just based on the tier levels and the water prices, being charged on 2022 water prices for water that we used nine years, eight years, seven years ago, just that alone, it would be about $1,500 less than the bill that we just received for over $3,000. I am not a water expert, I certainly don't want to be one, although I've done a lot of research on this, but I did contact a water expert. I contacted a woman who chooses to be anonymous, but she is, she was, she served as a deputy clerk treasurer on another city in Wright County. And she said one of her responsibilities was once a month, when the water meter readings were reported, she would send out the water bills. She said if there was a discrepancy and a meter wasn't being read properly, they would notify the resident. By the third month, if there was no reading or a discrepancy with it, by the third month, we would go physically to the resident and get it resolved. We would get an accurate reading and bill accordingly. She said, "I believe that's the city's responsibility, and they should have been on top of this." She said, "For this to go on for nine-plus years, she just can't even understand how something like that would happen," and that it's unacceptable. And in her opinion, the city should handle it with extreme leniency. Again, I'm not a water expert, we're just residents that have been paying our water bill on time every month for the last nine years. In addition to that, we received a late fee for not paying that $3,000 of $145 on a bill that we just got. To be honest, outside of all of these speculations, inaccuracies, and I believe extreme lack of communication, if the city's machine had worked and we knew the actual price of the bill every month, we just simply wouldn't have used as much water. And I know there's no way to know how much less we would have used, but we would have used less. We love this community. My husband, Sean, serves as one of the city boards. We do our best to shop locally and support small business owners here. We believe this is a safe community, the people are really kind, but in this instant, I feel like we've been dealt with very aggressively. We've already had our water shut off. And again, for paying our bill every month on time for over nine years. We also received an email on last Thursday that our water would be turned off today. When I saw the email on Friday, I frantically started calling the city and left a voicemail. I saw later the city office closed at 11:00 AM, so I missed them by called all morning when it was open, didn't hear anything, so I spent the whole weekend panicked that I was gonna wake up on Monday morning and have no water. Last night, I was doing laundry till 10:00 PM. I was thinking about putting water aside so that we could cook today and have coffee this morning. It was, it's a really big deal, and when I called, when the city called me back this morning, kind of nonchalantly saying, "Oh, it was a mistake. That email should have never been sent." Well, that's unfortunate, but a real bummer for us. It's been super upsetting and disheartening, and with so much of this being speculative, there's just estimations, inaccuracies, how I feel like none of this is our fault because we paid what our water bill has said. I think the city should take responsibility of their broken meter, and we should be reprieved of the $3,000 bill, and we will continue to pay the two working meters from this point forward.
First, I'd like to say that I'm sorry that you've had all this unneeded stress put on you, because this is something that should have been caught earlier, and that we're now three Public Works Directors passed when this issue first started, on the third one since then. Danny, how were you able to get the numbers pulled off of the water meter? Or is that a Kristi question?
I guess I need more of a clearer question than that.
She was questioning the accuracy of pulling the numbers off of there for the last nine-plus years without it not having transmitted to the city.
The register was read when we took it out of the house that day. We put two new ones in, manually, physically looked at and read.
Okay, and that total came out to the 407,000?
I just gave it to Kristi. I don't know, I didn't know what the prior reading was or anything like that.
So that's, that's the reading question. As far as the meter goes, the city did sell it to you, but it is your meter once you put it in your house. So on that side of it, yes, it should have been caught earlier, I'll repeat that, but the city has tried to contact you over the last, at least since Kristi has been on board, a couple different letters, including certified mail, that none were responded to. So the communication, at least in the last couple of years, has tried to be there. But I do see your point about the water prices having gone up over the last several years. And I had talked to Kristi a little before 4:30 today, and she went back as far as we had numbers available at City Hall, just in that short time, the last couple hours, and looked up the prices back to 2016. Based on, I think she looked up all three tiers, but the figure that we have, at least that I have in front of me and that you can take a look at, is based on tier two back to 2016. Again, that's all that we had. We didn't have back to 2013 that she found in the last couple hours. But it did reduce the bill significantly based on tier two for all of that. And based on just going back to 2016 and using those numbers, it reduced it by almost I agree, you probably would not have used tier three for every single month, but based on that usage, there would have been probably six months out of the year that you would have used tier two, just based on why you're using the outside water meter. You're probably not going outside and watering your lawn to make a hockey rink, but maybe you are.
Nope.
That fly is pretty annoying, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
It's just staying right by you the entire time.
It's just really nice, yeah.
So I, I think that it would be fair to go back for those nine-plus years to when it stopped reading and, and charge at tier two, which would be a significant savings, in my opinion, and the rest of the council may be different. It was water that you used regardless. I don't think it's fair to charge you at tier three. I do agree with you there, but I do think that there should be at least some sort of charge, whether it's tier two or tier one, that's up for a full council decision, but I mean, you can look at this if you'd like, this is just the numbers that she put together in the last couple hours dating back to 2016.
Do you have copies of the certified letters that were sent?
They're all in the packet. Is there any other thoughts or discussion on that? Other opinions?
I know, I agree that obviously water was still used. I don't agree that we should be charging her for the past nine years for this year's water prices, for sure.
I think it kind of, at least my thoughts, is it kind of lies on both of us, us as a city for failing to, you know, bring this to you sooner. Fly. You know, failure for, you know, for the times that we've tried to reach out on your end also, whether it be, you know, missed mail or whatnot, you know, so I think, I don't think you should take the entire blame for it. You know, I think, you know, if there was a way, we can kind of do a 50-50 type split, maybe cut this in half a little bit, since the failure kind of falls on both of us here. You know, I think, in my eyes, that'd be probably the best way to take care of this.
Yeah, I mean, ownership has to be taken on both parts here. In nine years of nobody from the city reaching out, so thank you, Kristi and Dan, for figuring this out. Sorry that it's nine years of backup, but I do agree that, Kristi, if there's a way to more time spent on figuring out more rates throughout that time, and I doubt that we're gonna get, be able to break down the readings, but, you know, maybe average out and figure out what it would be per year on that.
We should have fee schedules all the way back to 2013.
Yeah, I do, I do think that doing that, looking at, at cutting what it is now on that level, and, you know, I'm, I know we're talking with city staff, I mean, not to make it a burden, I need to pay the full amount, we can definitely work out payment plans on that as well. That makes it a lot easier of a hit, because I don't think anybody wants to afford a $3,000 bill off the top of their mind, but, you know, right now, it's working with us and working with you and making it right, and making sure that this doesn't happen to anybody else.
And waiving the late fees.
Absolutely.
I think that...
Yeah, definitely waive the late fee.
Especially if there's a payment plan, I don't want late fees to keep it cruelly on you. We're not a, we're not a bank, we're not a credit card company, we're not here to do that. So I want to make sure everybody's whole, I want to make sure we resolve this, and again, it's ownership on both sides here.
So do we want to look at an amount now, or do we want them to go back and calculate it all at tier one for each year?
I mean, I think it'd be fair to look back at every year and find out what those exact amounts were, correct?
I think that'd be fair.
As far as the pricing?
Yep, I agree.
And, and get that all together. If Kristi can get that together, and then we can send out what that would look like to you guys, as far as an accurate, rather than you're getting charged on 2022 alone. I think that that's a good start there. Anybody else have anything else?
No, I agree with that.
I'm.
So you'll need a motion on this. Do we want to put what tier in there? I just threw tier two out as an average. I, tier one would be fine regardless for every year for that water. I just want to make sure we give a clear direction to Kristi and city staff to, to handle it.
At this point, to make a concession, as far as taking ownership of it, I think tier one is fair, because we don't have the accurate readings of month-to-month. And I think we look back at year by year what the pricing was and go from there. And I think we look back at year by year what the pricing was and go from there.
For Tier One all the way back, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'll agree with that.
What do you think, Angie?
I think that sounds fair. Are we able to go back to 2013 for water prices and 2014, and we can go back to all those years? Okay. Yeah, I think that sounds fair. I mean, obviously, we used water, but, you know, like I mentioned, certainly we wouldn't have used as much had we known what the actual price was gonna be, so.
So the motion will have to be to bill at Tier One based on the rates for each year dating back to 2013 and waive all late fees.
And would that be like an average, like kind of divide all of the gallons by
Per year?
Yeah, that many years.
You go ahead. You saw it. Write it down. I didn't see her write it down. I didn't look over her shoulder. I will make a motion to amend the billing with Tier One prices going back to 2013. And waive the late fees.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
All vote aye. Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angie. Uh, City Council?
Let's see, we had a special city council meeting, fire department meeting, and a meeting with the concerned citizen.
Uh, City Council, special city council, park and rec, and then help the fire department with Derby parking.
Council and special council meeting.
Planning, zoning, special council and council.
Fire department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet is the activity report for September. Twenty-four calls in September. We're still seven positive for the year as compared to 2021, this time last year. Just some quick acknowledgements. Throwing out one to Wright County. Myself and Assistant Chief Tom Markington went up there and we were able to acquire a bunch of used office furniture from the old government center. So we're gonna be utilizing that. Also, Waverly Fire Department, they came out and assisted us on a motor vehicle accident on the 26th. And then we went into full-on cleaning mode at the station last week, so all the firefighters who helped kind of do that kind of stuff, so. Any questions on the activity report? Uh, next item is kind of an emergency management topic as well. Back a couple months ago, you guys agreed to utilize some of the ARP funds to purchase a standby generator for this building and the fire station. I was able to get some pricing quotes on that. I got them from two different companies, Midwest Electric and Generator out of Rogers, and then C and R Electric out of Winstead. Midwest was by far the cheapest of those, and I'm recommending to go with a 48 KW standby generator. It'll be placed out by the air conditioners right back here, and it will be natural gas-fed for when it's needed and will automatically turn on. Full price for the entire install and everything is $39,897.90. There will be some added expense, because we'll have to redo some fencing back there or do something just to kind of contain the air conditioner and the generator unit in that thing, whether it's chain link fence or something different, but we can deal with that through the emergency management budget as well, so.
Being that it's cheaper, is it still the same quality as the other ones?
Um, so Midwest Electric and Generator, they actually had me fill out a form where they actually went and pulled the Excel records for 12 months to figure out where our peak was and everything like that. C and R Electric, they just stopped by City Hall with me, and we met with Christie, and we pulled up like two random bills, usually in the summer months when AC is going and stuff like that. C and R Electric was quoting an 80 KW generator. Currently, we have a little 10 KW that will run almost everything between the two. So 80 seemed kind of a little excessive. The first one that Midwest came back with was a 36 KW generator, so I had them kick that up to a 48 KW, and it was only an extra like $4,000 or something like that, so. I think an 80 KW would probably be a little overkill. The 48 KW does allow us room for expansion as well, so if we ever add it on or did some changes or something like that, there's still plenty of wattage there to help with the standby stuff.
For those that don't know, what would the generator's purpose be?
So this building serves as an emergency operations center back up to City Hall if it ever were to happen. Currently, if the power goes out and there's a fire call, we can't get the garage doors open until we have two or three guys here to lift the heavy doors. Then we go get our generator outside, start it up, so that takes time, man-hours and everything like that. Plus, it will keep this room cool and heated in case we need to use it as an emergency shelter or emergency management, which we have had to use in the past.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion for the approval of the purchase of a new generator for the fire department and emergency management at the cost of $39,897.90.
Utilizing ARP funds.
Utilizing the ARP funds
Yes.
from the federal government. I'll second. Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
All vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Uh, recently took on two new firefighters. First one that I'll need accepted is Jennifer Brenney. Her official start date was September 20th of 2022.
I'll make a motion to accept Jennifer Brenney as a new firefighter effective 9/20/22.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Next one is for a part-time firefighter, Michael Summerfeld, the city clerk. He has already started with us. Effective date will be 9/6/2022. The amount that he helps us just during the daytime, just having more bodies and stuff, and he's getting a lot of experience right off the get-go here with us, so it's great to have him aboard, and I want to thank the city for allowing that to happen as well as allowing us to steal cocoa from time to time as well when that happens. Daytime firefighters are hard to come by and figure something out with them, so.
I'll make a motion to accept Michael Summerfield as a part-time firefighter effective 9/6/2022.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
All vote yes. Motion passes four zero.
And the last thing is, this month and this week actually is Fire Prevention Week. The NFPA theme for this year is Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape. It's focusing on escape planning, having two ways out of your house, practicing that your escape plan with your family, having a meeting location outside of your home, generally a neighbor's yard or somewhere outside of your exact yard, and then get out and stay out. Don't go back in for possessions, kids, animals, things like that. We can do that when we get there. Some other things just to kind of, to keep in mind, smoke detectors, batteries should be replaced every six months, and smoke detectors do have a shelf life of 10 years, and they should be replaced at 10 years. The sensors start going bad and cause a lot of faulty smoke detectors going off after they're 10 years old. This year for fire prevention, on Friday, first and fourth graders from the school are gonna be coming out and touring our station, and then we're gonna be going there for recess, so they can climb around the trucks, ask us questions, things along those lines. And then on Thursday, we're gonna go to the ECFE building and meet with a couple of groups that are there and let the kids see the trucks and talk with them a little bit, so. Always a fun week for us, busy week, but we enjoy doing it, so.
Do we have anything we can throw on social media pages as far as?
Yeah, I'm gonna start here probably tomorrow, I'm thinking. But I'll try to get a couple of them on there. In previous years, I have been able to get one per day and stuff, but life becomes more and more difficult sometimes. But it's out there, and there's a lot of information, and I link to the NFPA sites and some other sites as well, so. I will be getting that out there, though.
Thanks, Kevin.
Any other questions for Kevin? Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor, council and staff, the September 14th Planning and Zoning Meeting, we received an extension request from Creekside Hollow Platt, and we discussed the tree preservation ordinances, and we're gonna be having a public hearing on that Wednesday. Discuss that with the public. And that's all I got.
Speaker Chuck. Creekside Hollow Preliminary Platt Extension.
Mayor and Council, the city engineer and city staff had a meeting with the developer last week, and they are still working on doing some tweaks and based off of recommendations from the planning and engineering reports, as well as from the Planning and Zoning Commission. They would like to continue that into December so that they can continue to work on that and hopefully bring you something that would be approved at that time. So I just need a motion to continue that to December.
I'll make a motion to approve the Creekside Hollow Preliminary Platt Extension request to December.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
All vote aye. Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Uh, Park and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Beautiful day today, huh?
It was a great day out today, Dwayne.
Not gonna get many days like this left.
Nope, nope.
That's for sure. Um, I got some housekeeping duties on the Park and Rec Board. First thing is that we change the day of the week, Thursdays, instead of the previous day of the week, and then we're gonna start holding meetings at 6:30. The Park and Rec Commission discussed between themselves. There were some commissioners that had some conflict of interest, so to keep the integrity of the current commission was brought up, so then we all agreed on that, so just to give you a heads up. So our meetings will be held on the second Thursday, and it will be held at 6:30 versus the previous day at 5:30, which allows commission members to attend the Park and Board meetings. Park and Board, you know, one of my ideas, I think, when I come on board as this chairperson, and I always felt that was a shortcoming on the previous Park and Board, is they never they never made themselves, or I want to retract that. I guess what I'm, what I'm, my vision is to make us more visible within the community. And, and, and how to be accessible. So we've set up an email account. Uh, we put our pictures that, on the brochure that Kayla made. We get those on the city website. So we're starting to make some steps to make ourselves known and what our task and mission and what we're all about. Um, I also attended the Montrose Chamber of Commerce meeting, and Tom was there, I think, as your liaison on that, just to introduce myself and, and our vision and just to solidify that we'd like to work with them in the near future, partner up in anything that we could do, you know, as far as any programs maybe coming down the road. So I did that. Update on visiting the parks. We've visited six parks so far. So our goal is by the end of the year to have them all visited and then have that park and trail plan updated. So we're starting to concur down on that done. The parks that we've visited so far are Carver, Forest Creek, Platt Park, the Regional Park, the Disc Golf, and Veterans Park. We attended the golf course last time, and we were out there just walking around. It was kind of interesting. There were some uh, young adults out there playing golf. And they, we just asked them what they thought about the golf, you know, the golf course out there, this golf course out there, and they felt that it was one of the top five that they would have visited, so I thought, and then if you, if you do a little homework and Google it, uh, there's some pretty good information about that Disc Golf course from the input from the participants that actually go out there. So I thought that was pretty interesting. So we introduced ourselves and just asked them if, uh, their only recommendation was to expand the number of holes, of course, you know. And they also felt that it was a nice, open, secluded spot just to get out and relax, you know, play music and, you know, do their thing out there, so. It was, I just thought the city did a great job. Whoever planned that thing did a great job putting it together, and there's, there's some kudos coming back.
I've heard that from people that I know that do the competitive rolfing, and they, they've said that they wish that that would be used for actual competitive tournaments.
Yeah.
So I don't know how that works or what leagues there are available for that, but you know, that's something that I've heard brought up about people who do the competitive tournaments.
And that's something maybe the Park and Rec Board could take a look at, you know, after we kind of get done at the end of the calendar year here. So on our visits to the park, obviously, we noticed some deficiencies, and then we, and some cosmetic and also some construction deficiencies. I won't get into that during the minutes. But we will get that up to get it, the park and trail plan updated, and then we'll give you some ideas as far as kind of what we're looking at for immediate needs. The next topic I want to talk about is Nicole, her employer CCC would like to build a couple of picnic, I guess picnic shelters would be the best way to describe it. I don't know if you've seen these?
Yeah, the picnic table with the wood canopy over the top.
Has anybody seen this? I haven't seen it.
Was it metal?
Passing around.
I've seen it.
Okay. So anyway, she gave us a little bit of history on that, and the Park and Rec Board talked about it, and we'd like to recommend to the city, I think Nicole helped me out here, I think it was two, right?
One, for sure.
One for sure, if not, maybe two. But our recommendation to the city would be to take a look at that, and I don't know what rules and guidelines are involved as far as taking a free donation. So our recommendation to City Council would be to take a look at that, and then the Park and Rec Board will discuss possibly where to put that, maybe whenever it's developed and constructed. Uh, we also
I'll get clarification for you, Dwayne. I want to say it was one, but I'll get clarification.
I'm sorry you didn't hear you.
On the bench, I'll get clarification on the bench, if it's one or two.
Okay, okay, okay. So I don't know if that's something that the City Council wants to talk about, discuss, vote on, or I don't know what the rules
I think it would be similar to accepting the benches that the Lions put up where we tell them where to put it and they go, okay.
Yeah, there should be no issue with that.
Okay, perfect, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
The only thing that I would want to is just to ask about what the storage would need to be in the wintertime, or if they can just sit out in the snow. That'd be the only other question I would have.
If nothing else, maybe we can look at sealing them, sealing the boards or doing something with that. We also discussed the Halloween House Decoration Judging Night. We're gonna try to get it, talk to Christie, and we're gonna get it listed on the city website and maybe utilize social media somehow, some way. Maybe see if we can get some good, get some good participation by the community. And we're gonna be out on October 27th, driving around and, and we'll be taking pictures, and then winter will be announced at the November meeting. Another thing we talked about was community gardens. And Michelle, Commissioner Michelle Otto brought up a thing where I think the current, the way the current process works is that basically when you register, it's first come, first served. But according to, doing some checking around, the people that are actually out there put a ton of work into these things, you know, as far as, you know, getting it fertilized and de-weeded and spent a lot of labor into that. So it was brought up in front of the city, or in front of the council, commission to basically rewrite that, and maybe starting next year would be whatever current lot that you have, you would have that current lot again. Um, just because of all the work that people put into that. So we thought that was a good idea, so we made a motion and passed that. Future meetings that we want to address on things, subject material real quick, and I'll get out of your, get out of your way here. We're looking at some grants and funding ideas, like Minnesota Twins and some other things. I have a friend of mine is a city council member in another major city, and I'm gonna tap his noggin and see if he's got some ideas where we might be able to go. Obviously updating the park and rail tran, trail plan by the end of the year, and then updating the community gardens and possibly the adopt a park. Any questions?
No, I just want to say you guys are doing a great job.
I'm sorry?
You're doing a great job.
All right, thanks. Well, it isn't just me. It's the commissioner.
No, you and the whole commissioner are doing a great job.
Yep, yep.
So I appreciate it.
Yep, and the Chamber of Commerce said that too, type of deal. I think the benches that led park actually were installed. Is that right, Christie? So, you know, you're starting to see things, and I think the public's starting to recognize that, so. All right, I'll take any other questions. As long as I'm gonna sit down.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Yep, thanks.
Uh, city engineer. Button on the side.
Mayor, Council, the first item in your packets this evening is for the 2021 Downtown Government Project, Page One. It is pay estimate number seven and change order number three for K3 Underground. Based on the pay estimate, the work completed today, the project's approximately 84% complete. Uh, the change order, which is also in your packet and incorporated into the pay estimate, is for some additional parking near the fire hall, east of the fire hall. And that was discussed with the rest of the department and staff, but being brought before you because it's an increase in quantity associated with the improvement in their quarter requires council action. So what we're, what we're recommending this evening is approving pay estimate number seven to keep the underground in the amount of $619,000, $656.33. And then pay, excuse me, change order number three for that additional parking in the amount of $7,477.77. So with that, Mayor Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the pay estimate or the change order. about the pay estimate or the change order.
The, the change order is the additional parking and everything for the fire department, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
When do they expect to be done?
With parking, or?
Everything.
Project, or?
Yeah, everything.
So, I'm glad you asked, because I was going to do that as an update later, but ultimately, what we're being told is the concrete contractor will be back in town this week, and their plan is to wrap up all the curb and gutter. We've asked them to focus on driveways, getting most portback, and then they will be their third priority of the sidewalk. So, as soon as we can get all the curb and gutter and vehicles off the streets with their driveways, concrete driveways completed, then, then paving will occur, so. We continue to meet on the project weekly with the contractor, and are definitely encouraging their schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve pay application number seven, Downtown Improvement Pro Project Phase One.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion passes four zero.
Change order?
Nope, that one's next. I will make a motion to approve the Downtown Improvement Project Phase One Change Order Number Three.
I'll second.
Further discussion? I'll vote aye, Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Second item on the agenda this evening is related to the population projections for the water treatment plant study and the wastewater facility study. We had discussed this previously with, in terms of estimating population, so the city, consultant city planner did put together a memo, which is included in your package this evening, identifying some potential population projections based on the state of Montrose Office, as well as rag county growth rates. He did point out some unique circumstances as it relates to people working from home as a result of COVID. So, staff ultimately reviewed those ranges for population projections, and based on staff discussion, we're feeling like those may be a little bit low, so we wanted to bring this to council to, to ultimately get your input and recommendation for population projections moving forward, because as you know, we certainly don't want to identify costs associated with improvements that are too small, but yet we don't want to overbuild to it. There's not a right or wrong answer here, but it's definitely a comfort level of where you see Montrose population going, going. So, ultimately, what staff discussed in terms of, of population was recommending projecting 50 homes per year. The memo in your packet from the city planner identified the population as 38, so the difference with the 2040 population, or the 2050 population projection, is the difference of approximately 6192 based on the planner, or 7525 population at that 50 homes per year. So, this information is for ultimately some, some discussions surrounding staff recommendation, but ultimately we wanted to keep the council's recommendation as well.
For all the projections, are we also including what Waverly's numbers are?
This is specific to the city of Montrose.
Right, I know, but.
Waverly is doing all.
And how would their numbers affect what we would have to do for the wastewater treatment plant? I guess is kind of where I'm getting at, if they're projecting, just say, 38 homes for themselves every single year, you know, will we have to do more to make sure that we can sustain what's going to be built?
So, I think if I understand your question correctly, ultimately, Montrose is doing projections, Waverly is doing projections, as we bring those two communities together, we add them together to identify the, the needs of the facility, so they're going to be added to.
So, at the end, they'll, got it. Thanks for interpreting my gibberish there, Jared.
What's, what's the main issue of overprojecting and overbuilding this facility?
Costs.
But nothing as far as, you know, I mean, obviously, we undershoot, and then we're building more onto it, I mean, is that, is that efficient way to, to handle that with that project, with the water treatment?
So, so the cost is, is one downfall if you overproject. The other, the other part that always comes into the operation standpoint is if a facility is built too large at the beginning, operating can be difficult, so we definitely don't want to run into that situation. But I think in terms of the projections we're talking about, I mean, in 2050, we're talking about a difference of about 1,600 people, so it's not enormous, but yet if we were anticipating 10,000 people in 2050, and Waverly comes back at however many population, the plant conceivably could get too large. So, we want to make sure that we're in a, in a spot where council and staff are comfortable with the anticipated population projections, so that we don't overbuild and we don't underbuild. I think as staff reviewed this, 50 homes per year on average over the, the past 10 to 15 years seems to be about where we've been at, so that's kind of where this, we felt like the 38 was a little light. 50 seem more reasonable based on the previous path.
And you feel with having the 12-home difference per year, and you talked about, you know, 6, 700 homes, it's not going to make a huge increase to the size of this facility, correct? I mean, there's going to be added costs for sure, but not the massive amount where we're overbuilding it.
Correct.
I, I think it'd be better to play it safe at the 50 per year on average to look at that versus the, the 38. How many homes were built last year, do you, off the top of your head, Jessica?
I have to look.
I, I think it'd be better to play it safe, and to project slightly high versus undershoot it, and then, I mean, for lack of a better term, crap hits the fan, so.
Literally.
Do you just need a recommendation on that, or a motion?
Motion begin.
Okay, I will make a motion to go forward with the projection of 50 new homes per year on average for the wastewater treatment plant, population projections.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion passes four zero. AUAR.
Next item in your packets is regarding the AUAR update. The AUAR was originally prepared in 2009, and last updated March 12th of 2018. According to the Minnesota Environmental Review Board, who is the governing agency of AUARs, AUARs need to be updated every five years, and so we are coming up on that, that renewal period. Ultimately, what is an AUAR, you might ask? Ultimately, every time a development comes in, it needs, needs to complete an environmental review. If the AUAR was not in place, each development would need to do that on their own, but since the AUAR is in place, provided the proposed development generally meets the threshold identified in the AUAR, the city can move forward with that environmental process, and according to the fee schedule, does charge each developer a fee for that AUAR, because it's an investment that the city made back in 2009, reinvested in in 2018. That AUAR fee is $500 per acre for each development requiring environmental review. So, it's a way to, to recoup the cost that was, were allocated during the, the update and the original AUAR. We've outlined some tasks that are really, what are required to update the, the review, and this is based on the EQB guidance, as well as the previous update that was concluded in 2018. So, you'll note that there are five tasks identified there. We are not anticipating that a significant amount of additional traffic investigation would be necessary associated with the AUAR, or additional modeling in terms of the information that was previously done and projected as part of the update, so ultimately, it's a, if council does want to proceed with the update, we would, we would ask you to pass a motion for that.
What's the cost of updating the AUAR?
The cost that we've identified is prox, somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000, $20,000 for the update, and that's consistent with the previous update.
Would it affect the potential development in Montrose if we just required other developers to do their own?
I think in terms of development, the benefit of the AUAR is it looks at the entire growth boundary of the community, so it's a comprehensive look at it. So, now say, for example, a 300-acre piece comes in on one side of the city, and you start changing comp plan, future land uses, zoning density, it's more of a, a piecemeal approach. So, the short answer to that question is, it could.
What, what's the, the worst-case scenario if we don't approve updating the AUAR?
So, worst-case scenario would be that the AUAR expires, the developers that want to develop property within the city will each have to do their own EAW, or EAS, whatever threshold they trigger, so then there will be all the public meetings associated with, with that, and if council ever, future councils ever decided to go through the AUAR process again, then that would be, the work that's already been done today would be at sunk cost ultimately, so that's worst-case scenario.
Do you know how much has been put into the AUAR over the last 10 years, 15 years?
I don't recall what the original, I know when the AUAR originally prepared, based on some conversations that I had with, with staff at the time, I believe there was a comp plan, comp sewer plan, comp water plan, comprehensive transportation plan, those are all done as part of the AUAR process, but I don't have those figures significantly more than the update, I do know that.
Personally, I think having the plan done gives us an idea of growth, gives us a projected estimate of what we can handle. I mean, at the, at the rate we're charging, what, $15,000 to get this done, we're looking at 30 acres, and that's paid off. So, I, I think that we need to continue, continue the process, I don't want to see the sunk costs of years and, of doing this, and I think that we need to keep developing plans for future, future, future. We can't just look at today.
Any other questions on the AUAR?
Tammy, have a question?
Sure.
I'm just wondering, first, on the other issue with the, with the estimation of new development, 50 years per, does that include the development of the property that we talked about last year?
All projected development of 50 homes per year?
So, that would include all that? And then, I'm, I'm just a citizen here, but my input and my understanding from my experience is if you let developers do their own work, instead of just having the consistency of one, then you start having all different inputs from all different companies who may not have the same standards. So, at least if, if the city did it, we would have a consistent evaluation of the whole process, so, thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. I will make a motion to approve the AUAR renewal. I'll second. Further discussion?
I agree with David, I mean, we can't just look at today, I mean, Montrose is growing, there's no way around it, we've got to, going to get that, you know, heading and that foot down for future development, so.
Yep, and, and it's been a lot of money in the process that has been put into this originally, so. Further discussion? Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Yes, motion passes four zero. Our favorite topic over the last two years, the bio solids.
Mayor Council, the last item that I have this evening is related to the bio solids, which we have been discussing for two years. If you recall, in 2020, a project was awarded to Fergus Pump and Power to remove the bio solids from the bio solid storage tank at the wastewater treatment facility. The good news is those solids are out there in a dewatering bag, which is ultimately a bag that contains pours so that the liquid can drain off of the bio solids, so that disposal costs don't include essentially water or liquids. At the time when the bio solids tank was, was emptied, the bio solids, it was, it was, it was difficult for, for his pump and power, because those solids were so thick, they had been in there so long, and what we, that's what we call old bio solids, they've gone through all the biological processes that, that break them down. So, at the beginning of the project, the volume of bio solids was estimated, now that we got the bio solids out, the bags are in place, pretty much all the dewatering is done, that we're going to get, all the benefit that we're going to get from gravity has taken place. In 2021, a contract was approved with Northern Lions to remove the, the bio solids from those bags, get them to the landfill at a rate of 97.50 per ton. We have since contacted Northern Lions, they've indicated that the volume within those bags is approximately 2,000 tons, they are still able to get those removed this fall, and they are honoring their price at 97. at ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents a ton. Ultimately, this item is before you this evening because of the increase in the number of tons associated with the product that's sitting in those bags out at the wastewater plant. And they will remove those, will have weight tickets from the landfill so that all of the material that's hauled is accounted for by a certified scale. So that's the item before you this evening. And city staff does recommend proceeding with removing the bio solids and those bags from wastewater treatment facility.
How do they miss the mark by fourteen hundred tons? I mean, that's a huge difference.
Right. Ultimately, I think what it boils down to is the percent bio solids and the amount of water that wasn't in the tank versus the actual solids that were in the tank. So basically, it was like calculation of the volume of the tank at an average bio solids concentration. And I do know that when they're pumping it out, they're having a heck of a time because they're so thick. Typically, bio solids, if you think of it just in terms of a visual, the bio solids are typically a liquid mixture that contain both water and solids. The bio solids that were found in the tank were closer to mud. So it wasn't quite as, well, it was definitely less liquidy, but it was more compact, therefore didn't do matter as much. So I don't know if that's helpful or not, but that's.
I mean, we have to get rid of it. For people that don't understand, the wastewater treatment plant had a large buildup of sludge in the bottom. That's all of your excrement that you flush, and it had to be removed. Hold it together. It had to be removed and put in bags so that it could dry out. Now that it's dried out, it needs to be hauled away and put somewhere, and they spread it out and get rid of it. So it's all of the wastewater treatment plant sludge that's built up over the years. I mean, we can't just leave it out there.
No, no. And I mean, ultimately, it's twenty years worth of bio solids, and the cost is coming at you every year. I mean, moving forward, and I won't speak for Dan, but I know that there won't be bio solids in that tank for twenty years moving forward.
I mean, I don't necessarily disagree with that. Is there any cost of this that is going to Waverly? Or is this just part of their fees they pay every year?
Yeah, Waverly pays us a contracted amount, basically, so.
To help with this?
Yep.
Two thousand tons is a lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's an extra hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars you missed the mark on.
You have a question?
I was just wondering, is it like, well, my dad, he used to suck everything out of the drain, like bio, I don't understand, the bio solids, is that kind of?
It's poop.
So it's like, when you wash your car, you know, bio solids, it's dirt off your car, but it's basically the same.
It is, it's, but yes, in layman terms, it's poop that's built up.
Danny, do we have a plan to, moving forward, to not let twenty years go by?
We are currently going to start working with Bolton and Make and myself and the city of Buffalo. We haven't looked into that, been a busy summer, possibly hauling every year to Buffalo, but I'm going to tell you right now, hauling to Buffalo, that stuff to the Buffalo plant is not cheap. We did start off hauling it there, and it was very, very expensive. So, but yeah, we're not going to let twenty years go by again, if that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking.
I would like to get the cart behind the horse again, you know, so.
Yeah, it would be nice to have a plan in place so we know that if we need to adjust any pricing for Waverly going forward. So if it's going to be a larger amount to get rid of it on a consistent basis, if we need to up any kind of pricing, it would be nice to know that.
Well, you know, you can't think of this just getting charged to the city of Montrose here either. I mean, there's operating funds as the way, you know, donate, donate, has to pay, and part of this money will be coming out of the operating funds of the wastewater facility.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about, is if we have a plan going forward, we'll know if the operating costs are going to be higher to get rid of it on a regular basis.
Right.
If we have to increase those.
We'll look into that, or maybe possibly doing this again, but not waiting so long. We'll see what's cheaper as far as either Buffalo or Baguette again, but we won't wait as long. But we also all know that nothing gets cheaper.
Right, that's right.
So, just to let you know.
What's the reasoning that, I mean, twenty years worth?
I don't know if it was twenty, it was more like sixteen, seventeen, but that is something you have to ask former employees.
So just another case of kicking it down the road?
It's called, yeah, it's, yeah.
So it comes back to pulling on this.
Well, I guess to clean that mess up, I will make a motion to dispose of two thousand tons of bio solid human excrement for the total cost of a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Do we want the price in there?
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Can it be sold? Sorry, recycling, right? There are farmers I know of in power state that are using human waste for.
This stuff is so thick, farmers inject it, like liquefied? This stuff is not, no, I mean, no, this stuff is like modeling clay now.
Thank you, Dan, for that.
I'm just being, I'm just being honest, unless you want to water it back down.
Is there further discussion on the motion?
I hope we're done. Let's move this one.
Sorry, I'm just.
Avery, you got anything? No? Mr. Solars? Aye. I vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Oof, tough.
Any other updates, Jared?
Yeah, I'll make them really quick. So I just want to update the council. The soil borings have been, the fieldwork associated with soil borings has been completed at the rec park. We have not received the logs yet, but we're anticipating those will be coming back this week, so we'll keep you posted on that.
Those will get put on the park and rec agenda, or is it going to go straight to us?
There will continue to be discussions with park and rec.
Okay.
Second item, we have requested quotes for the backyard drainage improvements and desert run. We requested three. One contractor told us that they needed more time to put the quote together because they're so busy. One told us that the work definitely would not happen this fall, but it would be more of a spring construction, so as soon as we get those quotes back, we'll update council. And if the weather stays like it was today, maybe there's a chance to get some work if you choose to proceed. Otherwise, it's looking more like a spring after if council proceeds with that, so I want to give you an update on that. And then the trail improvement, so aggregate base has been installed. As soon as the concrete guys get back into town, they have that on their radar, do the concrete portion, and then get it taped as well. So that is still scheduled to be completed here this fall.
Well, they have to go back and, because, I mean, it's been two, maybe three weeks now since they've ripped up the, what was there on Forest Creek Trail? You know, kids are riding their bikes on it, people are walking on it. You know, is there going to be any more work needed there as far as smoothing it back out, or?
Oh, absolutely. Yep. So the progression would be get the concrete in, add up here, reshape the class five, and then tape it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mayor and Council.
Any other questions for Jared?
Any update on the quail and ring neck? I know they started the project, any confirmation on when they're going to continue?
That'd be more of a question for me.
I can wait for you, then.
Yeah. Give you that, my updates.
There we go, question is no longer on.
Public Works?
Mayor and Council, staff has concluded interviewing for the operator one position that was posted to be filled with the city, in which staff interviewed all four applicants. We only had four. And we are recommending hiring Keegan Hason at the position of maintenance worker one at twenty-five dollars an hour. The reason of the job title change is due to the lack of required licenses for that title. The city will give the employee eighteen months to acquire said licenses and then move him into the operator one position. The reasoning for this is out of all four applicants, every applicant had some sort of shortfall in the required licensing area for the operator one position. And in talking to the Forty-Niners, Aaron Racets, we can't offer him the job without the required licenses. So what I'm looking for you guys is to make a motion to hire him, Keegan Hason, as a maintenance worker one at twenty-five dollars an hour.
I know you said you had eighteen months to complete said licensure. Are you going to put together a progress plan that you can share with us as far as where he's at to ensure that we're on track to hit that?
Yeah, I mean, Aaron and I had to write up a letter to Mr. Hason. If you would like me to read this to you and make him sign it because of the union laws, this is what the letter stated. We appreciate your interest in the city of Montrose and the position of the water wastewater operator one position for what you applied. We are pleased to offer you a position as a maintenance worker one due to not meeting the requirements needed for an operator one. The following requirements are needed to obtain operator one position, that's a class D water, class D wastewater, class B C D L. The city will provide an eighteen-month grace period in which you will work closely with the water and wastewater department to obtain the required licenses. Once the above listed licenses have been successfully obtained, you will be given the operator one position at that time. We would also like to make you aware that if above listed licenses requirements for the operator one position are not obtained within the allotted eighteen-month timeline, the city has the right to terminate employment and would then look to fill the operator one position. By signing this, you would agree to take the maintenance worker one position at the starting pay of twenty-five dollars an hour and the requirements of above said paragraph. So what that's doing, that's covering us. If he's here and says, you know, I don't want to be a wastewater guy anymore, you hired me as a maintenance worker, I want to stay there. And with the Forty-Niners contract, you got to be careful. So with him signing this, if he doesn't have said licenses, we have the option to terminate his employment and hire and go ahead and look at another operator, because we're looking to hire a wastewater operator, not a street maintenance guy. So.
And do you feel eighteen months is more than enough time to accomplish that?
Twenty-five dollars an hour, the original ad was posted between twenty-four and twenty-eight. There is also a minutes worker one pay scale we got to stay between that was approved, so I got to follow some rules there. And talking with Keegan, he didn't seem to mind that, so he understands.
But you think he can, with knowing your experience in getting those license done, you think?
I can't tell you how a person's going to do. I can't tell you how you're going to test. I mean, I hope he gets his licenses.
Is it possible, is what he's asking?
Is it possible for him to get in eighteen months? Originally, we were only going to give him a year, so, yeah, I mean, that's what me and Aaron, the Forty-Niners can work with him. He can get a C D L through the Forty-Niners a lot faster than a normal person can. They can jump through some classes, what I was told. He's got to have one-year experience with the city in order to even test for a D and a D, but he has experience with his prior, so the state might allow that to him to take it sooner. But I don't know that. He has to call and find that out. I can't ask that information for him from the state, he's got to do it on his own.
Got it.
So, do I think he's going to be able to? Yeah. Does it mean he's going to? I have no idea.
Absolutely.
Okay.
He will, he seems like a very smart person, so. So that's the recommendation I'm looking for. Some kind of approval, I would guess.
Do you need, bring a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the new Public Works employee approval for hiring for maintenance one worker.
With the signing of that?
With signing of the contract to get the licensures for operator one.
Correct.
Within eighteen months.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Is the city paying for the licensing? The city pays for all licensing?
Correct. They pay for the, yeah, all the licensing, they still pay for us to keep our license maintained, so yeah, they would pay for the testing.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion passes four zero.
Thank you, Council. Moving on to updates, getting back to Mr. Paradise's question, that project in Pheasant Hills is linked with the Keighley project uptown here. They're using the same concrete guys, the same tar guys, so they originally were supposed to be back in town today. They're not, now coming till Wednesday. And according to the Keighley contract, they got to the end of, the middle of November to button this stuff up, so their concrete guys will work on this part, then that part, then the trails, and then the tar guys, so I really, really hope it gets done this year. It looks like it will. Once again, I don't have a crystal ball. The main problem right now is concrete. They're having a shortage of concrete, so whether it's material or workers, I think it's a little bit of both, but it's not the workers putting the concrete down, it's the people making the concrete, so. Other than that, I don't have any other updates.
Any questions for Danny? No old business, new business. Website upgrade.
Mayor and Council, staff has been looking at some different options to upgrade our website, revise. They specialize in government websites. They had a pretty impressive presentation, which was included on the table this evening for people to take a look at. The total cost for the website upgrade is ten thousand six hundred dollars. I know Council has had some time to kind of take a look and look at some websites that were done by this company. And if you guys are in agreement that we should go with this company, we just need a motion for that, otherwise we can keep looking.
What was there, after the ten thousand, what was the per year after that? I remember looking at it, but.
I'll have to look that up, but it was not an exorbitant amount.
Right, wasn't it less than what we're paying now?
Yep.
I believe it, it looks like twenty-one hundred here on what I'm looking at.
Yep, twenty-one hundred.
Yes. Oh, yep, the annual fee, yep, prepaid, so it's twenty-one hundred dollars a year.
And what are we currently paying? Is it twenty-six?
For God's office, do we know? My brother doesn't know.
It's over four.
What?
It's over four thousand, but I have to.
Four thousand.
So after the initial ten thousand in the first year, it'd be two thousand one hundred after that, sorry, ten thousand six hundred the first year.
Yep.
So after six years, it would have been paid off by what we're paying currently for a better-looking website?
Yeah, and their websites, the different cities that I looked at that they've done, they are, they're very nice websites.
And easily maneuverable.
Easily maneuverable, yes. Very user-friendly, very impressive.
Congressman Solars, your expertise is this, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I've looked at a handful of websites that they've done, and they are very impressive. I think the price is good. Our website does need an update in the worst way. There's some things in here that they offer that ours just can't do right now, so, yeah, I'm all.
And this was a lot more easily managed than the current gov site?
Yeah, it's, it's made to be easily updated and manipulated by staff. We'll be able to make changes with a click of a button.
I mean, just the search function on some of these other websites is worth it alone because the search function on ours is kind of horrid right now, but.
Where, where will this come out of the budget?
I believe last year, this was budgeted for revamping and updating the budget specifically. I think it's coming out of a computer fund.
Okay.
Treasurers fund.
And we, and we did budget for this, yeah.
Any other questions on the website upgrade?
I will make a motion to accept the revised website upgrade agreement at the grand total price of ten thousand six hundred dollars.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
All vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. So I had another proclamation made up for this month. This one is recognizing National First Responders Day. There are more than twenty five point three million first responders in the United States, and millions of Americans have benefited from the courageous services of first responders across the nation. And the men and women who bravely serve as first responders have found themselves on the front lines of emergency medical incidents, including structure and wild land fires, natural disasters, and a recent pandemic. And thousands of first responders have made the ultimate sacrifice over the years. And October twenty eighth has pre, has been previously recognized by the U S Congress as honoring the nation's First Responders Day. And now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Montrose, Minnesota does hereby proclaim October twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, as National First Responders Day for the city of Montrose. No open forum requests. Upcoming meetings, Planning and Zoning Commission have a public hearing Wednesday, October twelfth, seven P M. Community Center, Park and Rec, Monday, October seventeenth, five thirty P M. Which has changed to Thursday, the twentieth, at six thirty P M, correct?
Thirteenth?
Oh, the previous one, okay. October thirteenth for Park and Rec. E D A, Tuesday, October eighteenth, twelve P M, City Hall. City Council workshop on Monday, October twenty fourth, four P M, City Hall. And the regular city council meeting on November fourteenth, seven P M. Acknowledgements. First, just a reminder that the Halloween judging contest night will be October twenty seventh, so turn your lights on. I have a, a special thanks from the family of the car accident victim to the fire department. They just, they wanted to tell you guys thank you for all that you did and tried to do and of securing the scene for keeping it out of the public view. So that is directly from the family to tell you guys thanks. And to acknowledge you just in general for all that you guys do, so you've had a busy month so far. And city staff, and Christie especially, for her extra work that she did this afternoon for putting together all the water stuff, so.
I'd like to acknowledge Jennifer Brenney and Michael Somerfeld for taking the absolute time to join the fire department here in Montrose and let everybody know that we are always still looking, so please apply. We'd love to have you all.
Hearing no more acknowledgements. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Give me a second.
Second.
Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
All vote aye. Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, we're adjourned.